We reconvene this regular meeting of February 13th, 2023, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education. So we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance with some special guests from Prescott Elementary. Come on in. Do you want to tell us your name and what grade you're in?
I am Joshua Glenn, and I am in fifth grade.
I'm Jada Blocker, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Rick Coles, and I am in fifth grade.
All right, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Great job, guys.
Thank you. I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on Jan- We got to approve the agenda first.
Agenda.
I'm sorry. I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 9th, 2023, and the special meeting of January 19th, 2023, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 9th, 2023, and the special meeting of January 19th, 2023, as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to some board salutes. I believe there's a few board salutes around the table.
I'll take the first one. Board salute goes out to our district's school resource officer unit as we recognize National School Resource Officer Week this Wednesday. In partnership with the Dubuque Police Department, we believe this unit leads that way nationally in terms of how to develop a positive proactive program that's built from the ground up on strong relationships and diversionary programming. Our school resource officers are part of our school families. They visit with students, provide lessons on responsible decision-making, and work every day to ensure that our schools are safe, maintaining a safe and positive learning environment. Kudos to the members of our SRO units for always putting students first. We are thankful for their presence across the district. You see them often at activities, events, things outside the normal school day, so they are involved with our students. And I think, for the better part, we have a very positive relationship.
Thank you.
I have one I'd be happy to share. A board salute going to Dubuque Senior High School's speech team for the outstanding showing at the 2023 State Large Group Speech Contest. It was held in Waterloo, at Waterloo West High School on February 4th. I had had the opportunity to attend the regional competition in Cascade before that and was blown away by what our young people did. And at state competition, the team earned a total of 21 Division One Excellent Ratings, 21, and had a total of 16 entries designated as All-State Honorees. Dubuque Senior also received the prestigious E. Wayne Cooley Sweepstakes Trophy, awarded to the school with the most performing All-State nominations, making them the Large Group State Champions for the seventh time in school history. So the Board certainly gives congratulations to all of the students involved and a special thanks to their wonderful staff directors: Erin Dean, Greg Ernstin, Katie Galliard, James Riley, Megan Schumacher, Matt Tompkins, and Mary Jo Williams. Bravo on a job well done. We're very proud of you. Well done.
All right, I have one. Many of you may not know, but this old guy used to be a former wrestler in college. And I know wrestling is a growing sport for young ladies throughout the state of Iowa. And I don't have their names in front of me, but I do see them on social media with their parents. And their parents were super excited for the women who made it to state this year. So it was the first ever. So big congratulations to all the young ladies that made it to states this year, that competed on a high level. And I do know that we have some young men as well who are preparing for state as well. So good luck to all of them. I hope they all reach their goals.
Thank you. Great, thank you. On a somber note, tonight, we offer condolences to the family and friends of former Dubuque Community School District Superintendent Dr. Howard Pig. Dr. Pig died on January 31st at his home in Oregon at the age of 91. He joined the district in 1966 as Assistant Superintendent and became Superintendent in 1977. He served in that role for 15 years of his combined 26 years in the district before retiring in 1992. Our thoughts and prayers are with Dr. Pig's family, Betty, Holly, and Matt, as we are thankful for the over a quarter of a century that he spent in service to the students, families, and staff of the Dubuque Community School District. Our legacy with this district. Thank you.
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So in open forum, we have two guests before we open up to the public. And our first is Chris Nugent from Prescott Elementary.
Hello. First of all, I want to thank our students that came tonight and their families that brought them. They are a part of a program called Distinguished Dolphins. So throughout the school year, students can sign up to be a distinguished dolphin. And they have to show scholarship and good citizenship. And they have to do service work, so many hours of service work. And so this was their service opportunity to come and do the Pledge of Allegiance for the Board. So I'm thankful to them and their parents for doing that. And it's a great program. I just wanted to take a minute to give you a little update on what's going well at Prescott. So as we brought over the students from Fulton and some teachers from Fulton, our big goal this year has been building relationships and building community between students, families, and the school. And also with COVID ending and us being able to welcome families back into school, it has been a big goal of ours to welcome people back and just to get to know everyone and get everyone to feel like a Prescott Dolphin. So we've been really excited about the activities we've done. One parent activity every month. So we did an ice cream social in August and a family picnic open house in September and conferences in a garage sale in October and a family math night with Loris College in November. And of course, the wonderful soup luncheon in December. And in January, we did a steam night. And in February, we're doing conferences and a carnival. In March, we're doing a wonderful literature night in cooperation with UD. And then April, we're having a talent show. And then May, we are doing an end-of-year kickoff to summer. So I'm just being excited to build that community. And it's been a really good transition, and I'm loving it. So love to welcome the students and families to Prescott.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Our next guest is Abby Hammond from Synergistic.
Hi, I'm Abby Hammond. I'm the Energy Specialist for Dubuque Community School District and here to present the awards for Energy Star for 2022. Board members, Kevin, Amy, the Dubuque community, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here. Public speaking wasn't my strong still in high school, so I'm glad seniors are doing super well at it. So much like an appliance in the home, the Energy Star labeled buildings are also awarded certification for energy efficiency. A building earning Energy Star certifies it has met the strict energy performance standards set by the EPA and use less energy and is less expensive to operate and emits fewer greenhouse emissions. To qualify for Energy Star Building Certification, a building must score in the top 25% based on the EPA's National Energy Performance Rating System. Synergistic is proud and honored to announce that Dubuque Community Schools have 12 buildings that earn the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Energy Star Certification for Superior Energy Performance. These buildings are Audubon, Carver, Eisenhower, Irving, Kennedy, Marshall, Prescott, Sageville, Table Mound, Roosevelt, Hempstead, and Senior. Dubuque Community Schools has the fourth-most energy-certified K-12 buildings of any school districts in Iowa. On average, Energy Star certified buildings use 35% less energy and cause 35% fewer greenhouse gas emissions and are less expensive to operate than their peers, all without sacrificing performance or comfort. To earn Energy Star Certification, buildings are verified to perform in the top 25% nationwide for energy efficiency and meet strict ventilation standards. Energy Star is the only energy efficiency certification in the United States that is based on actual verified energy performance. These awards are recognized by the United States Environmental Protection Agency for excellence in energy and efficiency. They acknowledge the district's superior stewardship of its finances and our environment, honors each person in your organization for all their hard work and commitment in sustaining an exemplary energy conservation program. And then lastly, on behalf of the United States Environmental Protection Agency and all of us at Synergistic, congratulations on the significant recognition. We're very proud of our partnership with Dubuque Community School District and all of your commitment to protect the environment both for today and future generations. So thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. So at this time, anybody else who would like to address the Board can do so at this time. We ask that you state your full name, your connection to the district, and to please limit your comments to three minutes. And you can refer to the timer to keep track of how much time you have.
Seeing none, I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item a board member wishes to have polled at this time? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries. All right, so that brings us to the Facilities and Support Services Committee Report from Mr. Prohaska.
Yes. I believe the first thing that we'll be doing before we review and approve some motions, we'll have a presentation by Envision. Laura and her colleague will be-
Bobby Joe.
Bobby Joe, thank you very much, will be giving us a summary of their studies.
Michael's going to pull it up for us, so thank you.
To the rescue.
While we're waiting, I just want to thank Laura and Bobby Joe for your work, not only with the district and the community task force, but the community as a whole. So helping us to get focus groups and get lots of input from our community. So I appreciate the work that you've done.
Thank you. It's been a fun group to work with. Perfect. Thank you, guys, for having us tonight. As many of you know, I'm Laura Peterson. I'm an educational planner within Vision Architecture. And Bobby Joe is a project architect also with Envision Architecture. We're here tonight to present the last nine months' worth of work by a facilities task force. You want to go to the scheduled mic? So we really started this process back in June. We kicked off with a lot of listening. That's how we always kick off a process like this. Met with focus groups, including community members, parents, educators, students, civic leaders, really understanding kind of where you're at as a district, challenges with the existing middle schools, and things that should be part of drivers as we move forward with a new plan for middle schools. From there, we pulled together a task force. We'll talk about that group in just a little bit. And really started meeting kind of at the beginning of the school year with that group. We started to look at data points about the existing schools, understanding challenges of the existing conditions, and then really dug into site selection. So started to look broadly at the community, what the site opportunities were around the community, and started to evaluate those. And that was probably the longest and most difficult part of this process. We started to have community meetings. We've had two broad community sessions where people could come and get information about the process, as well as having that information posted online so people could get that information if they weren't able to attend meetings. We did a community survey. And then in the last few months, really finalized a site location and started to understand options on that site. What we presented tonight is really just the end of the master plan portion. If you decide to move forward with this, there's a lot more work to do. We'll talk about that kind of at the end. So just to recap, if you remember, we used a task force process. So we had a committee of almost 20 members, people from the district, parents, educators, community members. And really, this group was taking input that they had heard from the community and input that we were bringing them from different focus groups, evaluating different sites, evaluating different parameters. And ultimately, it was their work that came forward with the recommendations that you'll hear at the end. They just, we got to be the ones to come give the official presentation today. But a lot of other people put work into where we got today. Like I said, we started the process with listening. It's always, as architects, it would be easier to pick up a pencil and start drawing and work on ideas. But we really started with about two months of listening here. And through those early conversations, there were five main drivers as we looked for a future solution for Dubuque middle schools. One was scale. Concerns from parents from Washington and Jefferson. They love the size of their school right now. They feel like they know everyone in the community. So whatever approach we took as we moved forward really needed to keep a small scale and sense of community at a school, even if we were looking at larger numbers. So you'll see all the models we're showing really focused on a small learning community model where communities are still around 150, which is the house size you currently have today. Another main driver was value. We know that's a big reason why you embarked on this process in the first place was challenges with your operating budgets moving forward. And so finding a way that the schools could provide efficiency and value for the district. Education was one of the key drivers. How we can support 21st century and probably into 22nd century learning with whatever facility we're looking at. Your existing Washington and Jefferson buildings have supported you for 100 years, but to think that that educational model still applies today would be naive. Another large conversation was equity, how we can provide equitable experiences across all of our middle schools. And lastly, commuting and location. I think this was a giant driver in site selection is how we can find something that's embedded in your community. People really love that about Washington and Jefferson today. So just a few additional pieces of information. If you remember, one of the big things we looked at was the operating costs of Washington and Jefferson today. What you see on the left is the operating costs for, this is primarily staff salaries for Roosevelt. Right now, that's about $12,800. If we could operate the same cost for Washington and Jefferson kind of student populations, we'd save about 3.4 million. This is just kind of in salary numbers. And so there's other things to take into account, like building efficiency. You just heard about energy savings. I don't know if you didn't hear Washington and Jefferson listed on your Energy Star reports. So there's additional savings to be seen there. But also understanding that transportation costs will increase at this, will have increased busing. So there's things to consider all over the board. But as you can see, this primarily comes from staffing. Right now, you operate four houses between Washington and Jefferson. Whereas at Roosevelt, you operate three for the same amount of student population, which is significant staffing. This is one simple slide that documents about 150 points of an assessment that we did on all the schools. What you can see is this is an evaluation of educational facilities, not education, but the facilities that you have. So you can see Roosevelt about a B+. You probably say, well, why isn't it an A? It's a new school. Well, it's 17 years old, not a new school anymore. And it's starting to have aging systems like roof, which are starting to replace as part of your deferred maintenance. But you can see Washington and Jefferson have major challenges as facilities. One of the main things for both of these is the site constraints for parking and site circulation, just the general layout of those buildings. I think they're 11% and 18% air-conditioned, no secure entries, and not designed to really be middle schools. They were designed to be classroom and corridor junior highs. And so really, the feeling that you have at Roosevelt with houses just isn't apparent at Washington and Jefferson. And the last thing that the task force really looked at was trying to decide, should middle schools follow the high school boundaries or not? We had a lot of conversations about this. And really, the driving factor was being able to match the demographics that you've achieved at your two high schools. We talked about, you know, when you made that change, it was painful as a community to go through that, a lot of really hard discussions. But generally, we heard from many people that the breakdown of how those two schools have panned out is really looked at as a success almost 20 years later. And so as you can see on the left-hand side, those are your middle school racial demographics right now, very inconsistent, or as you can see, the high schools are almost identical matches to each other. And same with socioeconomic demographics between the existing three middle schools versus the high schools. So I think another part of this conversation is, as you move forward and those students get shuffled between middle schools, we could expect to see similar programs offered at both of the middle schools, Roosevelt and New Middle School, to meet these kind of needs for socioeconomic demographics. So as part of the project, seven different sites were considered. It would be really easy if you had a big flat site right in the middle of your town that was, you know, I don't know, 30 acres. It would have made our job really easy. But no such case in Dubuque. So seven different sites were considered. One was an addition at Washington, one an addition at Jefferson, one the Valentine Park site, then another building on the senior property, the old Dubuque PAC site on 16th Street, a site on the Southwest arterial, and the Flex Steel site. As you can see, we looked through these, had a lot of conversations. Some of the sites came off for the task force pretty quickly because of red flags. Others, there were a lot more conversation on. But really, the top four things that the task force was looking for was, one, site size. Can we get all of the amenities? We didn't want to give up anything that we have at Roosevelt just to get it in a specific site. Probably the biggest driver was proximity to students. We looked at a lot of sites, specifically the Southwest arterial. But generally, most of students in those cases would have to be bused to the school. And as the task force talked and got input from the community, really trying to get an embedded middle school was a big driver of the project. And lastly, kind of appropriate zoning and access, making sure we have good neighbors around the school and that the site should be used for a middle school. So as you can see, all the other six sites really came off in this conversation and ended on Washington. That doesn't mean that Washington doesn't have its own sets of challenges that will have to be achieved, but the task force really saw that it was the best option out of any of the sites. So after the site had been decided on, we tested four different options on that site. One was simply providing an addition to Washington. They wanted to look at what was kind of the lowest-cost option to solve the problem. So that would have been just an addition onto Washington. But really heard from the task force that didn't provide a long-term comprehensive solution to really renovate and rethink Washington and provide everyone the same kind of learning environments. And at a price tag of 65 million to just get kids moved didn't seem like a good use of dollars. The next one was an addition onto Washington to support the students, but also to renovate and really rethink it as one holistic building. The third was to build a new school on the other part of the Washington site. And lastly, what if we did nothing? They wanted to understand the costs of if we just renovated Washington and Jefferson and didn't fix the problem. Generally, we went through the conversation. The task force really wanted to end on kind of B and C. In their mind, do nothing was not an option. We understand that your operating costs are going to be a challenge without that. And still here, if you do nothing, you have to do a lot of work at Washington and Jefferson to even keep kids there. Do you want to go to the next slide? So really looked at two options then. One was to do an addition and one was to replace the facility. What you see is just diagrams. They need to be tested. They need to be vetted. They need to be tweaked, but really, they're kind of test fits. So the first thing we did was just understand, well, what if we didn't expand the site at Washington? But generally, then, the challenges with parking would still be there, and we wouldn't be able to get equitable athletic fields to what you have at Roosevelt. And so this option of kind of just building on the Washington site with no additional property was really ruled out as an option. The next two options look at adding additional properties. The task force considered different possibilities of how to expand the site. Right now, what you're seeing is expansion to the west because it has the least amount of properties that need to be acquired as part of it. So you can see, this is an option that did an addition onto Washington, gets you athletic fields, gets you the right amount of parking spots, also improves the site circulation significantly. One of the real challenges there is that bus and parents are co-mingled, and there's very little space to get any of that done on that site. And so through preliminary conversations with the city, one of their biggest drivers was get a long drop-off lane to get as many cars off of the street as possible and get appropriate bus queuing. So you can see here, using the entire north end of the site to really circulate cars so we can get them off and get them to drop off. Having 270 parking spots will help with that, as well as parking spot for 20 buses. So this was one option. And then the next option really looked at a new build on that same site with a really pretty similar strategy. But finally, you want to go to the next one? The kind of last test fit that has been done, which this still needs to be tweaked, is a pretty dense diagram of a school, but that still gets you everything that you're looking for. I think the denser we can kind of keep it and compact, the smaller the site we can get away with, if that makes sense. So if we want to stretch out, you would have to look at getting more properties as part of it. So lastly, as we pulled all that information together, kind of their final recommendation, one was to consolidate from three to two middle schools, kind of as asked, and tested that idea. They pushed back a little bit to say, is that really what we need to do? But stuck with that part. Retention of Roosevelt Middle School. Construction of a new middle school to serve approximately 1,200 students at the existing Washington site. But with expansion of the Washington site to provide adequate site amenities for parking, drop-off, and fields. So really, don't give in on any of those things just because we're picking a site in the middle of town. A big question was, should we go new or should we renovate and do an addition? And I think that what the task force felt was that they felt that we would be limited by keeping Washington and really trying to add on. Plus, the idea of trying to renovate and keep kids in school a longer duration was really a messy project if we tried to keep all of it. And so generally, their recommendation was to develop a design that retained portions of, if it makes sense, or reuses pieces, or makes nod to the history of Washington and Jefferson middle schools both on that property. And lastly, adjust the middle school boundaries to create a feeder system which aligns to the existing high school. So next steps, if you decide to move forward with anything, just wanted to outline what things could look like for you moving forward. As I said, this was a recommendation, not a final plan that you can take and just run with. So the first part is really to put a little more time and thought into- So the first part is really to put a little more time and thought into the design diagram, really test it with some educators, get additional information, have further conversations with the city to make sure we understand that next level of detail with the development. We also know that this isn't a community where we can just say, well, we want a full school. And is that okay? Give us the money. We know people are going to want to see it, they're going to want to understand it. And specifically because it's on an existing somewhat urban site, there's specific sensitivities that the design needs to have. So we would suggest you proceed with some renderings. Finalize the scope of the project. You know, if you move forward with the bond referendum as part of it, do you include projects from other schools to try to get those accomplished? Start a communications plan now. You've already started that, but start that. And host additional information sessions. Get more input and let people weigh in at this piece of the process, not too far down the line. From there, as you go through a refinement, then there would be a step where you actually finalize and approve kind of a bond language at a board meeting to document that that's where you're going to end up in the process. From there, if you move forward with the bond referendum, you have to do a petition where you have to get signatures for 25% of the people that voted in your last school board election. So whatever number that is, you have to have a petition to actually bring it onto the ballot. Then you would call for an election officially. And then really, the last few months is just get people to know what's going on. Communicate, communicate, communicate. Set up a website, do as many information sessions as possible throughout the community. Go to every single community group that you can to make sure that they understand. And then generally, you need a 60% plus one vote to pass if you did proceed with a bond referendum to get through this work. So that was a short presentation, a nine months' worth of work, but any questions you guys have, we'll be more than happy to answer them.
When Superintendent Ryan Gans brought us this consideration, what, two years ago? I'm not sure exactly. It was in light of the, what he explained to be an anticipated budget cliff. And I just want to be clear with the community. While we look towards your recommendations with an eye towards educational equity, to be sure, we nonetheless, underlying this whole thing, or at least in the beginning, certainly was the issue of cost savings. The district, I'm broken record about being 34th in the nation in funding to public education. Iowa is now. And as we face the funding problems that will continue and perhaps get greater, we're looking at where can we garner substantial savings? Fulton Elementary School's closing was certainly with an eye toward that, anticipating saving a million dollars a year. I want the community to clearly understand, we would not be looking probably at this level of change were it not for the need to find efficiencies. In the world of efficiencies in a school system, it sort of falls into facilities and operational things or people and programs. And as we look to not reduce people and programs, we look to increase our efficiencies and our cost savings through this kind of a move. We first looked at this as a $3.8 million savings per year. That's a little bit mind-boggling to me when I heard that. Now, 3.4, I understand that's an adjustment of the original thinking as you've studied it more and looked into it. As you look at the potential for increased busing, are you still thinking that the cost savings yearly, and I want to underscore yearly, this is not a one-time savings of 3.4 million. It is a yearly savings. That is a major step towards saving class sizes, staffing, and programs. Do you still see that level of savings as you now have studied and built in the factor of increased busing?
So the numbers that we looked at when we started, these are just the staffing numbers as part of it. And so as the study moves forward into the next month or two, we would have to work with Kevin to really make sure that we've got everything factored in. But we know there's additional savings in utilities. We know there's additional cost in busing. So these are definitely ballpark numbers that you've seen, and they just don't have that built into it right now, Nancy. So we'd have to get additional information if you decide to move forward to understand where the bottom-line savings is. But I think that it's definitely an order of magnitude of what you could expect to see.
Okay.
There's other questions, you know, how are you exactly going to staff the buildings? There's a lot more that we can get into.
But as the board considers your recommendation, to me, the net savings is a very substantial part of how we might consider your recommendation.
Correct.
So would you be able to bring that kind of information to us prior to the board's vote?
Yes, and I think that you would do any of that before you went to any sort of vote or bond referendum. We would dig in further because people are going to want to know and understand it. And so we would work with the district staff to make sure that those numbers are dialed in.
Thank you.
I think, Nancy, that's something that, you know, our team can put to look into and look deeper into that piece. But we also have to remember, if we do align the boundaries with the high schools, that kind of changes the current routes that we use now anyways. So it's gonna, you know, it could mirror each other more than we think.
And it could be less of an additional cost factor. I hadn't thought of that. Thank you, that's a good point.
Nancy, I think you bring up some good points that I hope the residents understand. Not only do we have a responsibility to look for opportunities to be more efficient, but with the savings, we also have some opportunities to be more creative in how we educate students in the future, right? And so I think those are some cool opportunities for us to think about. But also, you said something that was very powerful to me, is what happens if we do nothing?
Sure.
Right? And so if we do nothing, we know students will lose out on a lot of opportunities. We have, it'll be upsetting that teachers would be lost, and that's not something we want. We do want to be, as we say in the city, an employer of choice where people want to come to work and enjoy what they're doing every single day. So if we do nothing, it will be not good for us.
Well said.
Well, I think the task force also did a good job in narrowing down location of site because everybody has an opinion as to where they think a building should go. And, you know, some people think, well, obviously, there's open land here, just build it there. Well, there's a significant cost that go into undeveloped areas. You touched on it barely, but like the southwest arterial, first person in there is in charge of all utility and, you know, underground stuff, which adds significant costs. You know, everybody brings up the PAC property. I'm not going to touch on that topic. However, we did learn that that is uninhabitable for a school. Wish we knew that a long time ago. But, you know, so it's not like the district and the task force has not looked at every possible location because they did a very good job. And to also look at why there was recommended to go at the Washington site is because of how it can affect the students and how we are going to feed into these schools. It's not like we are just going to be combining the students from Jefferson and the students from Washington. And I think people don't understand that. The whole middle school student population is going to be realigned. They're going to be looking at how, from where they live, what will feed into, when they go to middle school, to Hempstead, and how it will feed into senior. So I think it's not just combining two schools. And that's another thing that I think people need to understand and that we're looking at. And, but the site consideration for me was huge because everybody had an opinion as to where this should go and where it shouldn't go. And I think they did a very good job of looking at it. And it's not done blindly. We all know traffic problems in the city, wherever there's a school. Our streets are not built like they are if you had flat land in West Dubuque. We deal with those things, but the city is working with it. And I just think that, you know, we are looking at those things as we consider this. What is it going to look like? And a lot of thought is going into this, and there'll be a lot more discussions as we look at it. It's not like we just said, oh, we're going to do this. Lots of logistics would be looked at, or you wouldn't have given us this recommendation. So we know the concerns that the community has. It's not like we're not paying attention to it, as does the task force. And change and growth is difficult. And I'm not one that always likes it myself, but it's something we need to consider. We know the cost savings that we have to do with this. And, you know, location is everything. And especially when we want to consider neighborhood schools as well. And that's just as important. At least it is for me, it has been for the entire time I've been on the board. And as we change things, this is a way of keeping it in a neighborhood that's accessible to many.
Yeah, I concur with what board members are saying. I don't, I think this is a position we'd rather not be in, where we're making decisions about closing schools and shifting things around. But it also, as Anderson says, provides an opportunity as well to look at a new situation, a new experience, and to build some equity for learning experiences for our kids across the district. So thank you for, you know, turning over every leaf and asking all of the right questions and for everyone who is involved in that process to make sure that you're pointing us to a good recommendation. And, you know, we look forward to getting information from our leadership about what our next steps will be in the coming months on this process. So thank you so much.
I'd like to point out as well, thank you very much, Laura, for the presentation. And I want to remind the public that this is just a presentation and the recommendation. The board is not acting on this at this point in time. There's a lot of work yet to be done. So hang on, as they say.
We have to figure out how we're going to pay for it. That's the biggest discussion that we have to have next. And that's another educational part that we have to learn.
Yep.
And with the community. And be able to explain to the community that this is going to be a different approach than what we've ever had to do before. And we need to be able to explain it very well. We need to learn it very well ourselves to be able to explain it to the community so they have trust that why we are going to look at different options of what we can do to pay for this.
I'd just like to point out a couple of things here about our facility beliefs. I'll just kind of rattle off a couple here. To design and renovate educational spaces that accommodate teaching and learning that promotes the 21st century skills, employability, digital, global, civic, financial, and health literacy. Incorporate flexible building designs and scalability that accommodate changing programs and technological needs. Bring all facilities to a safety and security standard. Then, one of the most important things, I think, was to provide equity in programming and facilities. It's a very, very important part of our facility beliefs. Anybody have any other comments to make or questions for Laura?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, after we had this short presentation, I'll give a recap of our Facility Support Services meeting, which was held on February 6th. We did have a presentation by Tim Oswald, a little bit about the financing possibilities for the middle school. Then we did do some updates on current projects. Senior High will have some change orders I'll mention. The Hempstead High School intercom replacement was brought up again. Central Kitchen replacement was mentioned. The freezer was mentioned again. The Roosevelt Middle School roof replacement. And we did approve, in our February 6th, we had a short board meeting after our committee meeting, we approved the transportation fuel system replacement and the Sageville Solar Project replacement. Then we also discussed a little bit about Lincoln School as far as the outdoor project. So I'll move into some recommendations here. And these mainly, the first few apply to the change orders at senior. I move that the Board of Education approve the executive construction contract bonds and certificate of insurance with PFNE powered by Meteor Education for the senior high school renovation Phase II furnishing fixtures and equipment bid package, number two project, in the amount of $290,537.22.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract bonds and certificate of insurance with PFNE powered by Meteor Education for the senior high school renovation Phase II furnishings, fixtures, and equipment bid package, number two project, in the amount of $290,537.22. Is there any discussion?
This is mainly for fixtures to bring senior high up to date, so to speak.
Furniture, good stuff.
Desks.
Desks, we need desks.
Yep, desks.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Tricon Construction Group on the senior high school renovation Phase II furnishing fixtures and equipment bid package, number one project, in the decreased amount of $2,784.87.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Tricon Construction Group on the senior high school renovation Phase II furnishings, fixtures, and equipment bid package, number one, in the decreased amount of $2,784.87. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number five to Tricon Construction Group on the senior high school renovation Phase II project in the increased amount of $98,005.77.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number five to Tricon Construction Group on the senior high school renovation Phase II project in the increased amount of $98,005.77. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to add that some of these changes were brought about due to when they were doing construction in the building. They found parts that needed to be updated, part of the, oh, support structures, some of those things that came into play that were not visible initially.
Wild things when you start digging around in the building.
That's right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number six to Tricon Construction Group on the senior high school renovation Phase II project in the increased amount of $70,436.30.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number six to Tricon Construction Group on the senior high school renovation Phase II project in the increased amount of $70,436.30. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the executive construction contract bonds and certificate of insurance with Metco Fuel Systems for the transportation fueling system replacement project in the amount of $771,545.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract bonds and certificate of insurance with Metco Fuel Systems for the transportation fueling system replacement project in the amount of $771,545. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to reject all bids for the Lincoln Elementary School Outdoor Wellness Project.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to reject all bids for the Lincoln Elementary School Outdoor Wellness Project. Is there any discussion?
It was called to our attention that the project bid was significantly higher or higher than expected. And in cohort with the city, there needs to be future studying about the cost of the project.
We're not trying to eliminate the project. We're just trying to make it affordable and get as much as we can in the budget we have.
Right.
Also looking for other funding sources, I think.
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the district to levy property tax for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 for their regular program budget adjustment as allowed by Section 257.14 Code of Iowa.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the district to levy property tax for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under Section 257.14 of the Iowa Code. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Yeah, that was the end of my recommendations or my motions. But I forgot to mention that initially last Tuesday, we went on a tour of senior high school prior to the prior to the presentations that we had. And I think the board as a, as a whole thought the facility looked like is really upgraded, transformed into something more modern on the interior. We started out the highlights for mainly the auditorium, which is going to be a beautiful facility. It will be open, I believe, for the March 4th, 100-year celebration of senior high school. Then we did tour the performance PE area. Some people call that the weight room, but anyway, it's a very nice upgraded facility. We toured the wrestling room, and we toured the music areas as well. And we had a very nice tour, took about a half an hour, and...
Got our steps in.
Got our steps in for the day. Some people took the elevator, some people walked.
True, true.
Anyway, I just wanted to point that out, that we, we had a very good tour and a very high opening.
Yeah, it was great to see some of the, some of the outcome of what we've been hearing about for so many meetings. Great, thank you, Mr. Bruska. Ms. Bradley will now give us the Ed Programs and Policy Committee report.
Thanks, Dr. Parks. We met, the Educational Programs Policy Committee met on February 7th at 4:30 in the boardroom and heard first about the VERTEX Pathway Plans and Career Clusters. It's a college and career readiness program that the district is investing much effort into to create opportunities in employability, job shadowing, apprenticeships. And it's taking some tremendous strides in collaboration with other partners in the community. Mark Burns, Executive Director of Secondary Education, David Moller, Coordinator for CTE, Career and Technical Education, brought us information, and they reported that we now have 16 four-year pathways. In other words, the four years of high, high school, presented for students to use when deciding post-secondary choices. After they graduate, then what? We know the weight of that on our students as they approach the end of their high school time. And this opportunity, I think, was amazing as the board here heard how much progress has been made in those areas since we last had had a report. The new pathways and the additional information about the pathways were based on community need and also trying to move forward with opportunities that will lead to good-paying jobs for our students once they complete high school. We were pleased to hear that Dubuque High Schools have had an increase in participation in concurrent classes as well as advanced placement classes. This was kind of a mind-boggling number to me. Last year, there were 306 seats, could have been some repetition of students, but 306 seats in concurrent classes. And this year, up from 306 to 778. That's a tremendous gain in participation in the career pathway programs. Last year, there were 748 in our advanced placement classes, and this year, it's up to 802. Also a significant gain in participants in our higher-level classes. As, as our presenters shared with us, all students have to complete an interest survey, and they're looking for ways to reach students who haven't been connected with a career path and get them connected in some way, which is a tremendous opportunity for our students to have. They are looking at setting up internships and working with community partners to give students opportunities for work experience. So that includes partnering additionally with NICC, which has been such a strong partner for us, and other local colleges and universities. Students can even earn concurrent credits, which is moving our STEM program and our opportunities for job shadowing apprenticeships for career pathways to be possible. A tremendous opportunity. They also shared with us that Dubuque Community School District has won an Iowa Governor's STEM Best Grant for $40,000 for CNC machining. So that's a wonderful opportunity for our district to acquire some additional opportunities. So all in all, we were delighted with the kind of progress that's being made in those career and technical education opportunities for our high school students. Then we heard from, in the Student Connections area, again aligned with our strategic plan, Jawanza Evans, our Equity and HR Specialist from the district, updated the committee on the New Black Excellence Association, seeking to focus on our African-American students and to have them have opportunities to come together and support one another and learn with and from each other. Meetings have been held at both high schools, 66 at one high school and 26 at another high school. Participants arrived to those initial meetings, very exciting numbers. And the ALC, Alternative Learning Center, has theirs coming up later this week. So the intention is to build these protocols and these organizations to look at what next might be expanded areas for minority students and others who would benefit by that. Then we turned our attention to recommendations for student fees. Happy to report slight increases only. So that will come to the Facilities Committee next time for further review. Then we dealt with the eight policies. One on the Superintendent Evaluation System, which was only slightly revised. And then seven that relate to the operation of our financial programs in the district. Minor changes, but as always, we carefully review and look for where changes and upgrades might be needed. So that was our meeting.
All right, thank you so much. So that brings us to new business.
I move the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing Black History Month and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the board.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing Black History Month and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the board. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So I will read the proclamation. Whereas Carter G. Woodson established a week in 1926, bringing attention to the contributions of the black community, setting the foundation for what would eventually become Black History Month. And whereas, Black History Month was first officially observed in the United States in 1976, recognizing African-Americans' contributions to the history of the United States and the world. And whereas, in February and throughout the year, we recognize and celebrate the significant cultural, economic, and social contributions made by African-Americans that helped shape our nation. And whereas, the Dubuque Community School District takes great pride and honors the historical and current contributions of members of our black community in countless professions and fields, including education, law, government, business, science, sports, the arts, brave service in the United States Armed Forces, and countless others. Now therefore, I, Kate Parks, on behalf of Dubuque Community School District, Board of Education, do hereby proclaim February 2023 as National Black History Month, signed this 13th day of February 2023. Thank you, everyone. Important month.
I move that the Board of Education approve, as presented, the settlement agreement of a litigated matter with payment to be made by EMC Insurance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve, as presented, approve, as presented, the settlement agreement of a litigated matter with payment to be made by the, by EMC Insurance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action on students number 819563 and number 825653.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action on students number 819563 and number 825653. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there any other board member or administrative issues to discuss tonight? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned.